I am the Torrington City Council. This is Tuesday, April 1, 2025. Good evening and welcome. We have here tonight Mr. Ryan Kaeth from K E R M, K G U S Radio. This council meeting is being broadcast live on both radio stations and also on YouTube. We also have here Ms. Amber Wolfington from the Torrington Telegram. Welcome to the press. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked Councilman Dennis Kelly to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda are the Mayor's informational items. We have been blessed and we are thankful for the recent rains. Living in this arid climate, unless it comes with hail and flash flooding, we are always grateful for all the moisture we can get. This is especially true as the farmers and ranchers are preparing for the upcoming irrigation season, and especially in light of the bad fire season we had last year, including extensive parts of Goshen County. In the city, I am already noticing the greening of the lawns around town. Also with spring, the city will be testing its warning sirens. As pointed out on the front page of the Torrington Telegram on Friday, March 28th, Torrington to test warning sirens. The first test for the season will be Saturday, April 5th at 12:00 PM noon. During these tests, you will hear the siren be activated for a short period of time, usually less than one minute, and then once we confirm all sirens are functioning correctly, the sirens will be turned off. In the event of a tornado that is within the area for the city of Torrington, the siren will be activated and sound for three minutes. If after three minutes, the threat of tornado activity persists, the sirens may be reactive -- reactivated. Let me repeat that. The first test for the season will be Saturday, April 5th at 12:00 PM noon. During these tests, you will hear the siren be activated for a short period of time, usually less than one minute, and then once we confirm all sirens are functioning correctly, the sirens will be turned off. And in the event of a tornado that is within the area for the city of Torrington, the siren will be activated and sound for three minutes. If after three minutes, the threat of tornado activity persists, the sirens may be reactivated. Thank you to the Torrington Telegram for their public service in announcing the warning siren tests in their March 28th edition. If you haven't heard, the Honorable Nathaniel S. Hibbin, Goshen and Platt County Circuit Court Judge, has been appointed by Governor Gordon to be the new district judge in Laramie County. Judge Hibbin has been the Goshen Platt County Circuit Judge since 2019. He has been an excellent circuit court judge. In addition, Judge Hibbin has been active in local civic affairs and active with the local Rotary Club. We will misjudge Hibbin and his family. Our loss is Cheyenne's gain. It may seem early, but now is the time to mark your calendars for the National Day of Prayer. This is a non-denominational, non-political gathering for prayer. There will be prayers for our country, our leaders, our children and youth, our military, and more. The citizens of Goshen County are invited to meet on Thursday, May 1st, on the south side of the courthouse, joining with citizens throughout the nation on this day which is set aside for prayer. Those participating will be asking God to intervene in our lives in ways large and small. The gathering will last for approximately a half an hour, starting at 12:10 PM. Please join us in exercising our right to assemble and our right to free speech as we approach God in repentance, supplication, and thanksgiving. Again, the National Day of Prayer, Thursday, May 1st, at 12:10 PM on the south side of the Goshen County Courthouse. With the nice spring weather, more pedestrians will be out. Please watch for them and yield to them where required. There will also be increased motorcycle and bicycle traffic. Please take extra care to watch out for them. And of recent -- and a recent phenomenon, I expect to see a lot of kids out and about on those electric scooters. Please take extra care to watch out for them. As always, please slow down, and please don't use your cellphones while driving. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the March 18th, 25, council meeting as published.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I have a motion from Councilman Viktrin to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda itself.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the agenda.
I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is what we call the public forum. It doesn't appear there are any takers because I don't see any slips put in that black box in front of Councilman Warren, but I do always like to explain this. This part of our agenda is for non-agenda items. There is a time limit of two minutes, and the speaker must sign up before the meeting. This is a time for the council to listen. No action will be taken. Next item on the agenda is an information item. Item number one, Wyoming Community Gas Update, and Rhonda Estes, our senior accounting clerk, is here to give us an informational update. Thank you, Mrs. Estes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you and let you know that Bobby and I, Bobby Dawkins and I, were able to go to a training that we go to every year before -- it's a March forum that we have for training before the Wyoming Choice Gas Program begins. And at that time, they distributed the checks to the communities. So we were able to bring back a check for Torrington in the amount of $14,079.53. And so those are -- that's an opportunity for us to use those things for special projects that are delegated with those monies that are brought back to our communities. So the Choice Gas Program is -- it has been in operation since 1996, and it's a chance for our residents in Wyoming that used to be on source gas to go out and pick their supplier. And so any -- Wyoming Community Gas was what -- has been one of the suppliers since 1996. And it is a not-for-profit organization, and it is made up of the municipalities that are member communities, and it's a joint board that we meet quarterly for. And so any monies that are made in this program, they go back to the member communities so that they can be used in the community for special projects, that it's designated. And some of the great things that have come into our community is we've done scholarships for E W C Skate Park. We've had some city shelters put up, a gazebo at the corner of the block here, some special things that they've done for some of the baseball programs. So we've had some neat opportunities with some of these monies that we've been able to bring back to our community. Just when we were there, we just learned that the Goshen County Library had been accepted for a grant, and they are receiving some monies for special shelving for ADA-approved for handicap needs. So we were pretty excited to find out that that was coming back to our area as well. So in 1996, a little bit about it is that the communities between Torrington and Douglas got together and they were discussing how we only had one supplier of gas, and the rates had increased, and it was a substantial amount, and several times, in one year. And so they discussed that while they were at WHAM, and they were finding out that they were all -- there were some of their community members that they felt were really hurting. And so they wondered if they could go together and create enough that they can get a supplier that might be able to create some competition. And so that is basically the idea behind it. It's not necessarily -- it is not-for-profit, but it's actually in place because they wanted to create some competition to help keep those prices for the natural gas program, keep the prices down for our residents in the area. And so we will have the Natural -- the Choice Gas Program that will start here, April 3rd through the 23rd. So those that are eligible to ballot for their natural gas supplier, they will get an envelope in the mail with a ballot, and if they would like, they could call or come in and visit with the ladies or myself, and we could help you ballot your -- get your gas supplier and the rate option that you would like. So we're here for the residents. Doesn't matter which supplier they choose, we will be happy to help them. But we're very thankful for the Wyoming Community Gas and the opportunities that it has brought to our community.
Thank you, Mrs. Estes, and I just want to say thank you for your participation in this program. I know that you're very much in support of it, as am I, and I appreciate all the work you do on this, on this balloting. So a ballot comes in the mail, and the person can either do it on their own, or the ladies in the front office are very pleased to help if they're confused or they just don't know what to do with it. You guys are available to help anybody fill those out, right?
Absolutely, yes. There's different ways you can ballot. You can do it online, you can call it in, or you can leave it with us and we'll ballot. At the end of the day, we kind of group them together then, and so they do give us a little bit of a discounted rate for having a group together. But yes, we're more than happy to help you, and if we aren't able to answer questions, we will get you in touch with the person that can. So and there's also a call center that calls out, and they can help with that as well. It is important not to give your control number to anyone until you're ready and you know that's who you want to ballot with, because once that control number is sent in, then you're locked in with that supplier. But we're willing to help you or give you the help that you need, and if you think you should have gotten a ballot, but you didn't, because you are allowed to vote for two years at a time, so if you think you should have gotten a ballot, but you're not 100% sure, you can stop in, we can get you in touch with someone, and they can help you get the information that you need to ballot if you do not have a ballot.
And I just want to confirm, the balloting period is April 3rd to April 23rd?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mrs. Estes?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that maybe part of the confusion too is that all the gas companies seem to call to tell you that they wouldn't want you to sign up with them.
That is true, yes. If it is a balloting time and you have -- if you have locked in for two years, they won't call you on the second year that you're in your program. But the year that you can ballot, they will call and try to solicit your ballot. And that's fine, we ask you to go ahead and check around and get some prices. That's what this opportunity is for, is to actually create that, and you'll find that I think most prices are very competitive. So but it is Wyoming Community Gas that is made up of the municipalities and the joint board. And that money is the only program -- the only supplier that is the not-for-profit, and that money goes back to the communities.
I got my ballot yesterday, I think.
I did too, so.
I just wanted to know, let the people know that this money goes to the community -- back to the community project. It doesn't go to the general fund to pay, you know, ordinary stuff, it goes to the special projects.
That's true. It's not to be put in the general fund. It's designated as special projects, and usually the mayor and the treasurer, maybe some of the department heads, kind of look at some of the opportunities that it could be used for, and we've had some neat things that have come back. Even the equipment on our walking path, some of that is Wyoming Community Gas monies as well. So we have some neat things in our community from it.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. Rhonda, on the $14,000 that you said Torrington's rebate was, I'm just curious, how do the member communities?
Divide that up?
Yeah, how is it divided up? Is it based upon customers signing up, or is it based on sales of gas?
It's any of the monies that are made in the program, then that is distributed back to the communities as in proportion to the amount that is in those areas. So for member communities, there are people, there are communities that are not member communities, so they have the opportunity to reach out and request a grant. But any monies made in that area, if you're not a member community, it goes back to the communities that are. So some of those communities, we get to divide up as well. But it's done kind of by population, or actually, you know, by volume, the amount of the gas that's -- so the more Wyoming Community Gas members we get in our community, if there's monies made, we get more of that back. So we like to see our numbers increase. So we've done some neat things. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Rhonda, appreciate it. All right, we are now on action items in the agenda. Action item number one, Mayor's appointments. Gentlemen, in 1A, we have an urban systems committee. I'm not a member of that committee, I'm ex officio, but I do attend the meetings. I'm asking council to approve my appointment of Byron Booth. Byron attended the last urban systems meeting. Byron is the YDOT area supervisor, for lack of a better word. He is -- took Buck Klemola's job over, so that's a wonderful addition. We need to have him on the urban systems committee. And then also to approve my appointment of Chris Stoddard. Chris Stoddard is the fairly new Goshen County Road and Bridge Supervisor, and I think it's been a while since we had a county road and bridge supervisor on that committee. It's the urban system, so it's our system here in town and the county and so on. So that's what's going on there. I just wanted to say Dennis Estes, at our last meeting, was elected the new chairman of the committee, so appreciate you for that service, Dennis. And I would stand for any questions, if you gentlemen have any questions regarding either Byron Booth or Chris Stoddard.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. The urban systems committee funds are federal DOT monies, is that correct?
Well, I'll give it a shot, and I might invite Public Works Director Harkins in on this. It is a committee that gets funding from the state, okay? And then, for a long time, that funding built up over the years. I think last year, Kelly Sitners, who's a member of that committee, made a motion at a meeting to put the 1.1 million, I think was in there, towards the East D Project. And that was seconded and approved by the committee. So that is a substantial part of how we're going to pay for the East D Project. Now, I'm not sure exactly how the funding works, but I would turn to Public Directs Work or Harkins or Super.
Yeah, it's basically federal money that's given to the state, and the state, through its urban systems program, divvies it up to participating municipalities within the state. Based on the number of municipalities, determines what the allotment of monies will be contributed to each city or program. Goshen County program coffers, I guess you could call it. Basically, we're getting right now around $100,000 a year. So, I mean, it's a slowly accumulating amount of money. The amount of money that we're putting forward to these D Street programs took probably 11 to 12 years to accumulate. So it's been accumulating for a long time.
So to my question, the funding source, I think I heard it, funnels from the federal government, down to the state government, distributes from there. To the East D Project, the reason why that project is being funded is because Highway 26 is a federally funded road and is diverting traffic now, helping to divert traffic onto East D Street. Am I correct in that understanding?
You're partially correct. It is a federally funded road, but the urban systems basically has a map of all what they call federal aid routes. They can be majors, secondaries. East D Street is on that map as a federal aid major, I think they call it, and as such, these funds can be used on those types of roads. We tried to use these funds on the 13th Avenue and East End Street project, but because those roads were not part of the urban systems map, we couldn't use those funds for that project.
So to kind of close out my question, it would be, since this is very much DOT-centered, the committee, my question then is, why is the representative from DOT not -- why is his position not indefinite on the committee?
Well, I'm an adventure. Go ahead.
Well, let me say one thing. I think DOT, those funds are mainly for use by the municipalities and the counties and not for the state. So being a member on the board is fine, but I mean, he's not basically eligible for any of the urban systems funding.
And frankly, I want him on the committee because he's aware of all the things that are going on around here in terms of -- because it is urban systems, it is for the road and those sorts of things, okay, to keep our urban system functional and running. So, I mean, it's nice to have him on the committee just for his expertise and knowledge in the area.
I want to make clear, I have no objection to Mr. Booth. I know him well and have full confidence in him as the local YDOT engineer. I'm just curious if it's federally funded mostly. He is the DOT representative. Yes, the state isn't getting this money, but it's just as -- I'm curious why his -- that position in particular wouldn't be an indefinite position?
Mayor, if I may, they have a representative from the state of Wyoming that comes from the office every meeting. She'll come down here, and she's actually the representative for that program.
Okay.
So when she gets here, we're all just members, like the city, county, state, and what's nice about it is we get together once every quarter, basically, and if nothing else comes out of that meeting, we all get to know what everybody else is doing for that summer project season or whatever, or what they're planning on doing. Because we don't necessarily hear from the state unless they come in here as a group, but it's nice for us to know what they're doing, and in the counties, the same way. So and we don't ever hardly interact with the county much on the road and bridge stuff, so.
It also gives us the opportunity to request information from the state, such as why don't we have a stoplight down there by Fresh Foods?
Or it helps to know if you -- if they have a chip sealer in the area that we can collaborate on projects with.
A lot of it's informational. The members of this committee are involved in, you know, streets, roads, and bridges in the county and in the city, and they put their heads together, and it's informational in great part, as Mr. Estes said, and it's valuable information, so.
Well, Mr. Booth, might he just advisory account, advisory position?
No, he'll be a voting member.
He's a voting member?
We have voting members. Mr. Harkins is a voting member, Mr. Estes is, Chief Johnson's on that committee, Chuck Kenyon's on that committee, I'm, Ed Hollis on the committee.
Oh, no.
Jim Eddington's on the committee.
Jim Eddington.
Okay, I'm trying to catch everybody who's in here. So we have a lot of city of Torrington employees on that committee. I'm on there as ex officio. I attend to get the information about what's going on. So I think it's a very helpful committee, and I -- and we meet quarterly, unless there's some big reason to meet more often than that. So I think it's been a good committee. It keeps the information flowing amongst the various entities, the state, the county, and the city, about what's going on with roads and such. All right, any further questions? That's a good discussion, gentlemen, I appreciate it. All right, we are on item 1A, and I would entertain a motion to approve Byron Booth as a member to -- for a term that expires on 12/31 of '26, and Chris Stoddard as an indefinite member. Do I have a motion?
I would so move to approve the appointments as presented.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Viktrin in item one, to approve the appointments as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor in item one of my approving the -- or approving the appointment of those gentlemen as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those two are approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation proclaiming April 25th as Arbor Day, and I'll take this time to read the proclamation, then I'll call on Mr. Estes. The proclamation reads as follows. "Celebrate Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore I, Herb Dobie, Mayor of the City of Torrington --" Now, therefore, I, Herb Dobie, Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim April 25, 2025 Arbor Day in the City of Torrington. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated this first day of April, 2025, Mayor. And with that reading, I would call on Mr. Estes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So as you know, we have done Arbor Day for many, many years here in Tree City, USA, whole types of deals. We will be celebrating that as far as I know now on the 25th with the fourth grade class. So what happens is we invite the fourth grade class. Matt Hickman, my Parks and Cemetery Supervisor, will be picking a location for the trees. We usually been, we had been doing up the ball field, so I don't know if we'll go back up there this year or maybe at City Park. If you didn't know, we had to cut two of the big trees in City Park down this year because the beetle got into them. So those two, the biggest trees, really nice trees, both of them had to come down. So we may go back to City Park. But we'll let you know. If you have any suggestions, let us know. You're more than welcome to show up. The mayor will give a little speech. The state forest will give a little speech and the kids will plant some trees.
And in my past participation, the state forester shows up and that's who the kids want to talk to. So, but it's a nice celebration and I think it's a good thing to keep this going. I don't know how many years Torrington has been a Tree City, USA, but many, many years.
Forty?
Forty.
Yeah, it's over forty.
And Arbor Day is even a state holiday down in Nebraska.
It is.
Yes. All right, gentlemen, do you have any questions for either me or Mr. Estes? Seeing there aren't any, I would entertain a motion to approve my signing of the proclamation set forth in item 2.
Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion to approve your signing of the proclamation for Arbor Day.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve my signing of the Arbor Day proclamation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of my signing the Arbor Day proclamation set forth in item 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that proclamation is approved and I will indeed sign it. Next item on the agenda is the 2025 swimming pool rates. Requesting council's approval of the 2025 swimming pool rates. I'm the reference. Just a bit of history and I might call on Ms. Strecker. And if I say anything incorrectly, I'm sure she'll help me. Several of us met and discussed this fairly extensively. There was a history of this. The last time any rate was changed at the public swimming pool was in 2021. That's the last time anything was changed. In 2022, 2023 and 2024, there were no rate increases. So that's the history of this. There haven't been any increases since 2021. Part of the discussion that we had was we certainly do not want to price people out of the market of use of our municipal swimming pool. That's what it's for. And in your handout or in your, attached to your agenda, we'll just go through this quickly. The new rate, proposed rate, if council approves. Family pass for up to four family members would be $175 for the season. A family of five or more members would be $225 for the season. Eliminate the adult category and the student 18 years and under category. And basically combine that into a category called individual. So that would be an adult pass for the season, which would be $80. The senior pass would be $60 for the season. And the adult swim slash aerobics punch card with 30 punches would be $75. And I think prior to the consideration of this, there were 20 punches on a card rather than 30. So we increased the number of punches on a card after discussion with the pool manager and the people that use that card and so on. And then on lessons, we considered increasing that. It's been $30 for a week of lessons. That's per child at 30 for a long time. I don't know exactly when. But we did not want to raise that because, for a couple of reasons. We want children to learn how to swim. We have families that enroll more than one child in swim lessons. And we have some families that, and I don't remember however many weeks there are of swim lessons, that want their children in swim lessons each week throughout the season. So we did not change that. So that would remain at $30. And then pool parties, we saw no reason to change anything with the pool parties. So that would remain the same. 50-person pool party would be $175. And a 50-plus person pool party would be $200. So, and Mrs. Strecker, did you have anything to add or did I leave anything out or get anything wrong?
No, I don't think so. So the big change here is the individual pass. We just wanted to make things simpler. Don't want to know your age, you know. If you're going to the big pool, it's going to be $80. Any admission to the baby pool is free for the parent or the child. So that's, that's a huge, huge benefit for the community and the families. Other than that, I think you did a great job there.
Okay, thank you. So there isn't a whole lot of change. There's some change. But as I said, when we talked about changing rates a little bit, we were guided by the idea that we did not want to place people out of the market. We want that pool used. It's got, has extensive use in the summertime by a lot of middle income and lower income families in this community. And we want it used and we want it used a lot, so.
We did compare rates to other communities around and we're not the lowest and we're not the highest. So we're kind of in the middle.
And some of those communities were rural, we looked at, and Lingle and Guernsey.
Lusk.
Lusk.
And Wheatland.
And Wheatland, yeah.
And Gearing.
And Gearing.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question on the pool parties. I'm curious how long they are and how much, do we have a minimum staffing rate for those parties?
Yes, we do. I am not the pool manager. I don't know what it is per person. But I know they have to at least have two guards available for the smaller parties.
Okay. And we've been successful in the past and obviously these aren't wild, crazy parties. There's no alcohol involved or anything like that.
No.
So, and I think, I don't remember who did it. I think the elementary school did it one year and the college did it one year. You know, sort of a welcome back to school party.
Yeah, but there are other parties that, like birthday parties or whatever else that you can, you know, have the pool. It's evenings. So.
I noticed the adult swim aerobics punch card went up the highest. It went up $35.
We increased it to 30 punches instead of 20. So that's why it looks a little odd there.
It calculates out to be 50 cents a.
Yeah, from $2 to $2.50.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's not too terribly bad. It looks worse than.
It must be popular, though.
I don't remember how many we sold last year. I think it was like 14, 15. But a lot of them were buying more than one. So, you know, we thought maybe 30 punches would be better for those people who are, if they go to aerobics, they usually go all summer and that 30 punches is probably going to be more convenient for them.
And Jennifer Brummel, our pool manager, was at this meeting. So she was really aware of pool usage and who used what and how many things were sold in a category. I think we had some data on that, but I don't know if I have it here.
On what, Mayor?
Oh, how many, no, I do have it. So for instance, in 2024, it's this long sheet, Lynette.
Yeah.
In 2024, family less than five, there were 60 of those sold. Family greater than five was 16 sold. Senior, there were 18 season passes sold. Adult, there were only two season passes for adults sold. Student, now we don't have that anymore, so it's all adult. And there were only 14 of those. So in that category, if it, unless it increases this year, it'd be about 16. Those were the numbers of, that we had that were sold in 2024.
And we had 11 pool parties.
I didn't know we had that many. Okay.
If there are no further questions, Mr. Mayor, I would just add that with the pool renovations soon to wrap up, I would hope that our community would take advantage of the pool this summer and the, and the, you know, the necessary repairs that are undergoing there and so forth, not only in the main pool, but the kiddie pool as well. Sure it's going to be, in my opinion, a really nice attraction and a safer one for folks that will have that plaster completely fixed. Given that, I would move to approve the swimming pool rates for 2025.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Vikram in item number three to approve the 2025 swimming pool rates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in item, item number three, all those in favor of approving the 2025 swimming pool rates, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those 2025 swimming pool rates are approved. Next item on the agenda is item number four at the bottom of the first page, waiving of the nepotism policy. Seasonal swimming pool employees. And I'd call on Mrs. Strecker, Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've done this for several years now. It's kind of inevitable to have kids working for parents or brothers and sisters working at the pool. A lot of, you know, it's a family ordeal a lot of times. So if the parent knows how to swim, the kids are swimming too. So anyway, we do have a need to waive that policy this year. Our assistant pool manager and her son will be working at the pool. They will do their best to try to have separate shifts. But it's going to, you know, it's may end up that they may have to work together. In that case, Jennifer will be available if there's any, anything that is needed. And they'll try to avoid that situation if it happens.
So we're only asking council to waive the nepotism rule for one parent and one.
One child, yes. And I don't think we need to know names, so.
Positions, assistant pool manager and lifeguard.
Yeah, it's the first-year lifeguard, so.
My memory serves correct, Mr. Mayor, we did do this last year too because of a similar circumstance.
Yes.
My memory too, Mr. Councilman Deal, yep.
And that was for the manager and her daughter, yep.
She's done it every year for as long as.
Yep.
Long time.
Well, it's one of those things, just the nature of it, so.
It is just a seasonal job and we've never had an issue in the past, so.
So given that it's been successful, Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve the waiving of the nepotism policy for the swimming pool.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Deal, item number four, to approve the waiving of the nepotism policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. I think the bringer is intending to waive it just for 2025.
Yes. That is correct.
Okay. Satisfied?
Mm-hmm.
All right, any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of waiving the nepotism policy for the seasonal swimming pool for 2025 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the nepotism policy at the swimming pool is waived as discussed for 2025. All right, we're on the second page. Item number five. The CDBG Income Survey Incentive. And for this item, I would call on Mrs. Strecker, the Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you remember, back in September, we approved for the application of two CDBG grants. One grant was for a sewer lining project for $920,000, around there dollars. And the other one was for a water, new generator at the water treatment plant and on the booster station at West Sea. So those were tentatively approved. An unusual thing happened, which has never happened to anyone before in this program. This program requires a certain low-income percentage of customers or receivers of this benefit. The City of Torrington, when we applied for this, this grant, we were eligible. We had 54% of our residents or households that were under the threshold limit. Between the time we applied and the time it was awarded, those LMI numbers changed and we were no longer eligible. We were at 47% LMI and it has to be at least 51. So the WCDA staff has posed the question to the higher-ups at the HUD and the federal level. And we have not heard back yet. One project, we were able to piece out on the LMI maps, the areas served, and we were able to get it to qualify. So the sewer lining project is going to go forward qualifying under the LMI. The generator project is for the whole city of Torrington. It benefits the whole city. So the whole city's LMI is at 47%, the new 47%. So the only way to mitigate that is to do an income survey of our residents. So we don't have to do all the residents, but we have to survey, it's around 250 residents. In the past, we've had to do this for CDBG grants, but it's only been for a specific area. It was pretty easy to just go door to door, try to get those surveys answered. This is the entire city and it's going to be time-consuming. We could do mailers. We do have a program that Tom has. It's called Survey 123 through the GIS program that is eligible under HUD rules. We might try to use that, but it's really hard to get people to answer these questions. They don't want to tell you their income level. So we were brainstorming as a group. So we were brainstorming as a group, all of the affected players in this or affected departments and were brainstorming. And we asked HUD if we could offer an incentive. If they return their survey, can we give them an incentive? Say, if you do this, we'll give you, our idea was to give them $5 off their water bill. If we do 250 surveys, it's about $1,200, $1,300 if all of them return it. So, you know, the whole project is a $1.4 million project. I'm not sure if HUD will allow this, that question's being posed. But with everything going on at the federal level, this is not their priority right now. And we're having a hard time getting an answer. So I would just ask that if, what you guys thought about offering a survey of $5 or an incentive of $5 off if they answer the survey of their utility bill? If you think it's way out of the question, we won't even bother to do it. But is it, if it's something that you think would be okay to do, if we could get like an approval if HUD okays it, whenever they okay it? And then if they do, we can get those surveys out and get them going. So that's my question to you is, is would you be willing to allow us to offer that incentive for those residents who answer that survey?
And just a little bit on the survey, because I know people are zealous to protect their privacy. This survey doesn't ask for names.
No.
I think it's household income that they're asking for.
Yeah, it asks for household income and it just asks you, do you make more than this threshold? And then you circle yes or, or no, you know, it's really simple. And it is anonymous in that when we report it back to HUD, so each address that's selected, it's selected randomly, is given a code. And so when we report it back to HUD, we only report the code. We don't report the actual address. So there's no name attached, there's no address attached, given back to the federal government. It's just this code and then the survey and then the amount of the, if they make above the threshold or not.
But the information on the, on income levels will be basically, the city would know who was living at that address and everything. Otherwise, you wouldn't know who to give the $5 rebate to.
That's true. That's true.
So there still might be, that's still same stigmatism, they don't want to tell anybody what to make, how much money they make.
That's true.
It's, it's fine, but I, I don't know how accurate it might be or how much percentage of people turn it back in.
If you don't, you feel like you don't want to attach it to their water bill, we, we could do some other incentive of some sort. I don't know. A free pass to the pool. I don't know.
Well, and part of it is, here's the problem. When we applied for the CBD, CDBG grant, the city qualified.
Yes.
Okay. So then they changed the criteria during the approval process. So then it didn't qualify and didn't qualify for not a whole lot of difference, okay? I think. And there's a question that's also gone up to HUD that who knows how long it'll take to get an answer. Is the law, if you qualified when you make the application, is that the law? Or do they have, can they change it during the process and change the criteria so you don't qualify? And that's a question we don't, and that's a answer that HUD has to give us.
Yeah.
And we don't know the answer to that and don't know when we will know the answer.
It makes sense if you qualify when you applied, that's just to go through, but.
Well, that's what makes sense to me, but.
And Mr. Mayor, there's, there's the question too. I believe the LMNI is based on the decade census. Is it the Wyoming Office of Statistical Analysis then that changes the figures annually?
Yes.
And this is worthy of discussion, in my opinion, because it's a $1.4 million grant that we could get for that West Sea project.
And there is a chance that the survey will result in we don't qualify. I mean, there is that chance.
And is the 250 figure, is that the methodology for statistical accuracy for?
They gave us the list of, they put it into their.
Okay.
Program and gave us the list and there's about 250.
So I was just wondering if we could do double the amount to get an appropriate number to be statistically accurate.
I don't know if we can outsmart them, Councilman Deal. I think we have to do what they tell us, right? I get, understand where you're coming from.
So we gave them a list of the addresses and then they put it in their system and then it randomly selected about 250 for us to survey.
Oh, so the addresses are already pre-selected from HUD?
Yes. They have to be random because we can't select certain lower-income areas to make it qualify.
And would this be a phone survey, it would call their home?
No, phone is not allowed. It, it has to either be in person, by mail, or there's some approved electronic methods out there. We, when we originally met, we asked them if we could use our TextMyGov. And apparently that's not an acceptable means of survey. Because we get a really good result from texting. But we thought that, and we'll meet again to decide on the exact method we're going to use. But maybe we can preempt the survey by saying, you're going to get a survey. Please, we'll do that by TextMyGov and maybe they'll, they'll notice the survey and get it back to us. But tonight, I just wanted to ask if you would approve an incentive, if the federal government will allow us to do that. If not, that's fine. We can try to do it without it. Or if you have another idea.
What? Go ahead.
Is there a timeframe this has to be done by?
Yes, yes. So I think we have, I think 180 days from the date of award. I'm not for sure, but I think that's what I read.
What?
The date of notice.
They've stipulated that we need to survey, did you say 250? And if, I don't know, half of those theoretically say, I don't want to participate, then what? Does HUD then say, well, here's another?
They probably will, yes.
Okay. Next question is, you said that we've had to survey in the past and typically it's been done in person?
Door-to-door, yes.
And how long has that taken?
Quite a while, because a lot of them aren't home when we're surveying. So a lot of us, I think the water department did the last one. Did they go after hours or did they do it during work hours? And they had to go back several times. How long did it take? Yeah.
But that was for a, for like a neighborhood area, a lot smaller area. This is citywide.
I think the last one we did was on West Sea, if I'm right. West Sea from Main Street up. Like a couple blocks, so.
And so I understand what you're asking, Lynette, is a motion to the effect, if HUD approves, allows the incentive, then Council would approve the going forward with the incentive if HUD allows. So we don't even know if HUD will allow.
Right, we don't. So it's only, I just, if we are allowed, I'd like to get started on it right away so we can get going. So if you would approve it, then I can get started if we are allowed, if we get that notice, we could get started on it.
And going back to Shane's question, Mr. Mayor, that presents another inherent difficulty too. If we don't get enough surveys so that the statistics do not satisfy requirements and we have promised something and HUD says, well, you didn't get enough surveys, or we run out of time, then we have that incentive that we're going to owe to those people who did respond.
Right, we would. And what, and if the surveys come out that we, you know, we aren't low-income, then yeah, we'll, we'll be out that $5 or.
Yeah, we still have to give them the incentive, but 250, that's not much anyway.
It's about $1,200 if all of them.
How much was that figure?
About $1,200.
Oh, five.
Yeah, if you only get 50% of the ones that turn back in, it's only, so it's worth the investment, I think.
Yeah, the return on investment is great if they, if it turns out and we have, we get those numbers we want for income, but.
Unless HUD keeps going on and on and on, you don't have enough or whatever.
Or isn't even worth it? Should we just?
Well, I like to.
I'm intrigued, but I, I'm also, on the incentive side, I'm kind of intrigued with the offer of a free swimming pass as well. The, the, the survey would, you know, you get to choose $5 off your water bill or a free pool pass one day, one day. I'm just trying to think of what incentivizes families.
Right.
Well, yeah, that'd be great to send my, my child to the pool for the day. Or some people might not have children and they'd take a $5 rebate on their utility bill.
Are there some people that take the survey that don't have kids to go to the swimming pool or?
Right.
Take $5 off their water bill, right? I like the idea. We don't know until we try. I hope that we would get enough response and qualify because at stake here is a $1.4 million grant. And if we don't get this, we're going to have to figure out something else.
$1,200 to get 1.4 million is a.
Pretty good return.
Yeah. And.
Go ahead.
Are there some people in Torrington, like the Bell Park Towers and stuff, that don't have to pay water bills? Individually like that? So if they got a survey, they?
How did we list those, Sylvia? Do you remember?
Yeah, they, like Bell Park Towers just pays electric. Bell Park Towers, the individuals tenants pay electric and tax. And then Bell Park Towers pays the water sewer garbage for all of them, so.
Same way with Evergreen Court, do they do the same way?
Yeah, they're larger complexes with one meter, then they would just share it.
They just have, maybe they, they would qualify as, each one of those is a household.
I'd want it those separate addresses, yep.
Do we know if any of those addresses came back on the?
I haven't looked at each one of them yet.
Since we're playing odds here, right? I think if we had, the household has a choice, one free swim or $5 off your water bill. That's not going to, there'll be people that slip through the cracks on the incentive. But odds are we'll catch them with one or the other if we offer those two, right?
We could.
Tom?
Mayor, I think it would be better. I think it'd be better if you just offered them $5 in Chamber Bucks. And the city accept the Chamber Bucks at the pool or they could use the Chamber Bucks to buy the bill?
It would remain anonymous that way.
Okay. Be easier to administrate, right?
Yeah.
They could spend it anywhere in Goshen County at the participating.
That'd be easier to do your bookkeeping by doing the Chamber Bucks than rather than?
Probably. We just have to mail it to them or?
Yeah.
Just be a gross amount, so.
That was a good idea. Thank you, Tom.
But is that, is the Chamber Bucks a $5 minimum or is it 10? All I've ever seen is 10.
All I've seen is 10 too.
I left mine at home that you gave me, so I don't know.
I will check on that. If that's the way you want to go, I'm sure they'd work with us.
Sure way it benefits everybody that spends their $10 or $5 or whatever.
All right. Unless we have further questions, if I've got this right, I would entertain a motion on item number five. If HUD allows us to offer an incentive to do the survey, we would approve an incentive of a $5 Chamber Bucks for those who respond to the survey. Does that sum up what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think I can put. I would move, pending HUD approval, the authorization for a $5 rebate via Chamber Bucks to survey participants in the CDBG income survey initiative.
Okay. All right. I don't know if I can repeat that. I have that motion from Councilman Victorin. If HUD approves to go forward with an incentive for those who respond to the survey and the incentive is a $5 Chamber Bucks card.
I would second that lengthy and well-worded motion.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Do, is there any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll try to repeat that. All those in favor of approving, if HUD approves, going forward with a $5 incentive through Chamber Bucks to those who answer the survey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that survey incentive in item five is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we are on item number six, which is award bid, East D Improvements Project. Staff recommends awarding the bid to Eric Reichert, insulation and construction of Scottsfluff, Nebraska in the amount of $6,75,831.58 and a reserve of $407,542.42, which is 6.6% for contingency for a project total of $6,476,582. And I would call on Public Works Director Harkins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For your information, and it's in your packet on the attached memo, this project will replace about 6,750 feet of existing 4-inch ductile iron pipe water line in East D Street with 8-inch C900 PVC pipe. It'll replace 18-inch storm sewer with 2,976 feet of 30-inch reinforced concrete pipe, 728 feet of 24-inch reinforced concrete pipe and 344 feet of 18-inch reinforced concrete pipe. And 1,208 feet of 15-inch RCP laterals. It'll replace 17 storm sewer manholes, 36 standard curb inlet catch basins. It'll reconstruct the street with an 8-inch PCC pavement, including curb gutter, sidewalk and ADA ramps. We did have a bid opening. We had some, I'm going to call it pretty impressive, participation with five bidders, even though the five bids were kind of all over the place, as you can see. The low bid of $6 million and change to a high bid of $11 million plus. We did go to the funding agencies. All the funding agencies did approve the recommendation in concurrence for the award of the bid to the recommended low bidder. As you can see on the back, our project cost funding, we currently have $7 million to fund this project, which should cover the construction, the contingency, and the engineering costs. We do have a representative from MC Shaft here today with us, Don Dieh. If you would like to ask him any questions, I'm sure he'd be more than willing to try to answer them for you.
And I didn't catch his name?
Don Dieh. I told you in the staff meeting it was gonna be Adam Vath.
You did.
But they switched it up on me.
Okay. I thought I had, all right. Mr. Dieh, you want to come up to the podium? Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I was in Kearney this morning, so I didn't know if I'd make it back in time, but I did.
Good, good. Thank you for being here.
So, Don Dieh with MC Shaft and Associates. Again, our recommendation would be to award the bid to Eric Reichert Construction. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I've been on the council for many years, and I don't remember ever seeing Eric Reichert's name in any bid form.
Yeah, I mean, he probably started up, he's always done the insulation part and that part. Probably five to seven years ago, he got into more of the horizontal construction, the concrete and so forth. We've worked with him on several projects in the last few years, both with water main and paving. He did a project last summer in Sydney, Nebraska. It's about four blocks of water main, storm sewer, and paving on that. He's just done numerous, several projects in Scottsbluff as well. So, we've worked with him. I'm comfortable that he is capable of doing the job and doing a good job.
That was a good question, and I think Eric, is it Eric? Eric Reichert is the gentleman that owns the Sinclair.
Yeah. That's correct.
Here and several in Scottsbluff gearing area. He's been here on other, in front of this council on other items, so that's that gentleman.
But I don't think he's, they've done any construction work for the city?
Not for the city, but as Mr. Dieh...
Yep.
Just explained, he's done some in Sydney, Scottsbluff. You're familiar with his work?
Yeah, I mean, we've designed and inspected several projects that he's done. The new roads behind Home Depot in Scottsbluff, I don't know if you've noticed those or not. I mean, there's nothing on them now, but they did do the paving on that and some water work on that as well. So, Sydney, like I said, he's done some work in gearing that we haven't designed, but he has done some work there as well, so... And he builds his own gas stations. He's done that in numerous places, both in Wyoming and Nebraska, and I think Texas. And so he's had some, several locations where he's done that as well.
Mr. Mayor, given the timeframe and the inflationary rate, I would like to commend you on coming as closely as you did to the estimate.
Yeah, I was, we kind of did that estimate a couple of years ago when they were kind of working on the funding, and so we kind of stuck with that estimate, and I was a little bit worried it'd be a little bit lower than that, I mean, the difference. So I was pleasantly surprised as well.
And we had, this is a substantially complete date on or before June 30 of 2026. So, do you have any idea when he'd like to get started if we award this bid?
Yeah, I mean, I, from talking to him just after the bid, just to make sure that, okay, you didn't, since there was such a difference, just make sure, okay, you didn't make a large mistake in your bid. And he assured me that he didn't, and I kind of asked him kind of what his timeframe was, and he's kind of saying sometime probably in May is when he'd want to start if, you know, we got the contracts approved and all that. So, I mean, that's still kind of up in the air, but he does have until that June 30th of 2023, or 26, sorry, to complete the project. So, and he's well aware of that and knows that that's the deadline that he must meet.
And if, once he starts and everything works right, and he got the supplies and all the things, about how long will this project take to complete from start to finish?
I would assume it would be pretty close to that June 30th date, even with the May, because there's probably gonna be a winter shutdown period, and so we would shut that down. He has 300 calendar days, but as part of the discussion, the pre-bid meeting, we did say that we would allow for a winter shutdown at some point, but it would definitely have to be complete by June 30th. Or after that point, liquidated damages would start to accrue.
Now, is there something, if we award this bid, is there something in the contract that states that you can't just go in and tear up East D Street and leave it that way for months so people can't get to their homes and stuff?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, as part of the, as part of his pre-construction meeting, he would have to provide a schedule, and we would make sure he meets that schedule. We wouldn't allow him to do more work than what he has the staff on hand to do that. So, he does have, he would have a performance bond and a payment bond, both as part of the contract. So if he wasn't meeting that requirement, you could always, the council could always go back against his bonding company. I've never had a problem with Eric Reichert as far as starting something and then just leaving and going somewhere else. I mean, not to say there won't be a couple of days where he has to go finish something up, do a pour somewhere else or something, but he definitely will come, I mean, he's definitely always came back to that project and continued to work on it.
And this will be like a block or two at a time, right?
Yeah, I mean, as part of the pre-bid meeting, there was some discussion from a lot of the contractors that a block or two was not enough of a distance to shut down at one time. And so as part of that meeting, we did allow them to do it in no more, no less than two phases. So they could close down half of the road and work. From talking to Eric, that's not really his plan. What he'd like to do is kind of work three or four blocks, kind of a rolling type of closure. And so he could get the water, the sewer, or the water in the storm sewer down for two or three blocks, and then have a crew come back and start paving, and then while he tears out the next. So you might have six, seven blocks, you know, closed down at a time, but he would be working back behind him. So we'd keep that rolling.
And there would be one direction that's closed, so traffic could pass?
No, the whole road would be closed.
The whole road would be closed. They'd just be detoured around.
Yeah. With the, especially with the storm sewers on, kind of on one side of the street, and the water mains on one side of the street, he'd be working on them kind of simultaneously. There wouldn't be room for any traffic allowed, so... We did talk about where if he got to, where if he got to a point where we could allow the cross-street traffic to cross with some, you know, some temporary crossings, we would try to work with that after the water and the sewer was done, so...
So, thank you, colleagues, for the questions, because you've asked most of my questions that I was gonna ask. So I heard there's gonna be stipulations in the contract for milestone dates. He's gonna have to meet in order to advance?
There's nothing in the contract that says that he has to be done with a certain part of the road at a certain time. He does have to do it in no, no less than two phases. So he can't close the whole road down from end to end. He would have to do it at least in, like, half.
So I guess I'm gonna go on the record and say that I don't know how comfortable I am as a councilman if a contractor closes a mile and a half of a major road in this town.
They're not gonna, it wouldn't close a mile and a half. No, it'd be like six blocks at a time, so probably like from...
The length of the project is close to a mile and a half, yes? If he was to close that down, not a mile and a half, you got 6,750 feet?
Yeah, I think it's like a mile.
A mile and a quarter, I think.
If you were to close half of that at a time of a major road, I don't, my phone's gonna be ringing. I think the rest of everybody else's is gonna...
I think, so the discussion at the pre-bid meeting when we talked about this was, the contractors are concerned that, okay, we, you guys want it done by June 30th, yet you want me to do it two blocks at a time. That's not doable. So, our, the discussion then was, it would be better to get it done in a shorter amount of time than to lengthen it out and say, take two or over two construction seasons. And then also kept the prices low, where they would have to...
So, so if you have, if he does it in two phases, and you said there's a winter shutdown, then what becomes of the project, the construction area in that shutdown time?
Right. We would phase it so that he doesn't have that, I mean, he doesn't have three blocks open. You know, we're gonna kind of know when winter's coming, and we're gonna expect him to kind of have it buttoned up. Now, there might be an area where it's not, but he would have to have some gravel surfacing and have access to people's driveways and stuff over that winter shutdown period. And he would have to maintain that. It wouldn't be something the city would have to maintain. So, you know, we would probably try to keep it to a block or less that would actually be disturbed. It wouldn't have open trenches. He'd have to have all the trenches filled back in, so forth. And then he would have to have access to both pedestrians and for people to get to their homes.
Okay, you did mention there would be stipulation in the contract of liquidated damages if he hasn't, isn't complete...
That's correct.
At the end of the project. I'm just, just hearing you correctly, that would be in the contract.
That's correct. It's $1,000 a day.
Okay. So that crosses off those questions. I'm gonna turn now to the tabulations.
Okay.
And your estimate of, I want to start at the top of traffic control and safety.
Okay.
Your estimate of $75,000. His bid for that same service is 40, roughly $44,000. If we look at the other bidders, their traffic control costs are extremely higher than his. So I'm just wanting to understand the scope of traffic and safety. I think if I understand the project, and I'll be the first to say, I haven't ever seen the plans, but the traffic control is going to be the greatest probably at the tie-in on Highway 26?
Yeah, I mean, more or less, all he's gonna have is some road closed barricades on each end of his work area. The side streets will be closed off to the work area. The work along the highway that he has to do, that would require some more extensive traffic control. It, you know, and I see what you're saying, but if you compare, say, the two low bids, you'll also notice that his mobilization is $180,000 or $170,000 more than the second bidder. So sometimes contractors will put different items in different, so you could have put some of them, the items in, in, say, the mobilization that maybe Paul Reed was putting in, traffic control. So, where those two add up, you know, not exactly right, but close, you know, I'm very comfortable with his numbers and how they compare to what we had.
Okay. And going on the same, same kind of questioning there, on the concrete, just the paving part. You estimate at $75 a square yard. He's under you decently, but the rest of the guys are, on average, $100.
Right. And I specifically...
My question to you is, is he just a hungry guy for work? Or is he not employing as much labor to pave the road? Is he using more machinery?
You know, I guess the one thing that I will say, I don't know his, I mean, I know how he does things. It's not that much different than how anybody else does things, so I can't say that he's any different in that sense. But I did, you know, between him and the second low bidder, it was like $600,000 difference. So a big chunk of his difference between his bid and the second person's bid was in that eight-inch concrete. And I specifically asked him, are you good with this number? And he's like, oh, yeah. He's like, if that's, and this was right after the bid. And he's like, if that's, if that's where, you know, I was lower than them, I'm very comfortable with my concrete numbers and what he had.
Okay. I don't think I have anything more, Mr. Mayor, at this moment.
And again, that performance bond also would, I mean, I mean, he, once he signs the contract, he's, you know, he's stuck with that dollar amount.
Yeah.
And if he doesn't perform that work, then that's when you could go back at his performance bond.
The other question I wanted to touch with you on was the similar projects.
Okay.
You mentioned in Sydney, what was that scope of that project?
It was similar to this, just a smaller nature, so it was four blocks.
You said four blocks?
Yeah, four blocks. Now, the two years, I can't remember if it's two, time goes crazy. Two or three years ago, he did do a mile long, pretty, well, it probably wasn't a mile long. It's probably half a mile long project in Sydney also, that had some similar, where a wide road, similar to this. And he did complete that on time as well. And it had some major storm sewer on it as well. I kind of forgot about that when I was talking about projects earlier, so...
That was in Sydney?
That was in Sydney also.
Okay.
So same type of project where he had water line and sewer and curb and gutter and paving on the road?
Yeah, the one project in Sydney had water main, the other project didn't. But the other project had a lot more extensive storm sewer. It was also, there was storm sewer main down the street, and then is also tying over three blocks in three other locations. So it was, it was a large project.
One other technical question I have. How does he perform work while also, I guess, how do the residents get their water back while he's still working?
So the existing water main will remain in service while he's putting the new water main in place. And then as he gets sections completed, he'll do the testing on it. So do the pressure testing, do the bacteria testing. And then once that passes, then he'll start switching services over to the residents. So they'll never, I mean, there might be intermittent where they're down for a half a day at the most, but that will be always notices to the residents prior to that, so that they know and can plan accordingly.
And I know, Mr. Mayor, residents who have street-facing garages will probably be questioning, okay, how long am I going to be parking on the side street around the corner from my house?
Right. And I guess Eric's really good at, I mean, keep notifying residents of what's going on with door flyers or whatever. I mean, I guess I haven't talked to Mr. Harkins about this, but, you know, a public meeting before the project starts would probably be a good idea, just so they have contact. That's something we've done in several projects before. So that would be another way to kind of keep them up to date on what's going on, so...
As much concrete as there is to be poured, is he using the local concrete guys here? Or is he bringing his own stuff in, or...
I know he's using a ready-mix supplier. I don't know who he's using. I don't, I don't, I assume, I can't say who he's using, because I assume it's gonna be Kroll, but I don't know that. And the one reason I do assume, I assume that is because I know Kroll's been in contact with me about some of the testing stuff, so I assume that that's who he's using.
And I don't know. Maybe part of the reason he has this low bid is because he's local, and the other guys aren't so much.
Paul is.
Well, Paul Reed is, but the others aren't.
Mine and him.
Well, they're way higher.
Who knows what other projects they're bidding as well?
What's that?
Who knows, who knows what other projects are bidding as well, so...
Yeah, it's hard to know what, what their workload is at the time that this bid was out and what they have kind of lined up, and with that June 30th completion date. And, you know, if they have something that's gonna tie them up the rest of this year, it's kind of really hard to...
And I appreciate your coming, Mr. Dieh, and I appreciate council giving you some pretty hard questions.
No, they're all very good questions, for sure.
Because that is an occupied street from the highway all the way up.
Right.
Residents. And we even have, the east side of the city building is facing that, too. So that's why I think a lot of the concern, I mean, how inconvenient is this gonna be to those in the project area?
Right. It is, there's no way to get away from the inconvenience of it, for sure. You know, hopefully at the end of the project, they're all excited about, oh, I got this new road out in front of my, with new curb and gutter, new sidewalk, new storm, all that entails, so...
And I think that at the end of this, I mean, their water line is now down to what? It's four inch, and with this buildup, it's two inch?
It probably in some places, it's at least two inch, maybe even smaller. Who knows?
And so they're gonna have water, regular water pressure?
There'll be better pressure and more volume.
And the storm sewer situation will be better?
Yeah, obviously, because there are some flooded areas on East D Street. This, hopefully, will take care of those.
What is that, hopefully you can put it in the form of a percentage, but what is the percentage of increase in that storm? but what is the percentage of increase in that storm water system will we realize?
You're going from, I think it's an eighteen-inch reinforced concrete pipe right now from Highway twenty-six all the way up to Twenty-seventh or Twenty-eighth Avenue, something like that. Uh, obviously, the, the increase down by Highway twenty-six is gonna be a thirty inch. So that more than doubles the capacity of the, of the storm flow down at that area. It, you know, necks down as you get further up because it's not taking in as much water. So it should convey more storm flow overall as a system than the current eighteen-inch pipe. Because once the eighteen-inch pipe gets full up at the top, then there's, there's nothing except for it to go, you know, down the curb gutter and wherever it finds people's yards, people's-
And also the new inlets will add additional capacity that, to allow water to get into that system versus what's out there today. You know, they're kind of the smaller inlets. So these would be open-throated inlets that would allow water, more water to get into that storm drain system.
And I think, Mr. Harkins, that current, that existing infrastructure is sixty years old, maybe even older.
Some of it is probably down at the lower end. The higher end's probably a little newer, but not, not that much.
I know those houses on the east side of East D were built right after World War II.
I have a house in that general area and it was nineteen fifty-four-
Yeah.
-when it was built.
And you're east of East D.
Yeah.
So they're, been there a while.
The water line's been in there that long, too.
Yeah.
A lot of people will cross east and west on that street, too. Up the airport, Walparks, Parks. It's a good used street.
Yeah, it's a busy street, for sure. So.
Now, this project has been on someone's mind, anyway, since oh-nine, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's taken, whatever twenty-five minus nine is, years to finally get to where we're looking at awarding a bid.
Sixteen years.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've been, I've been working on it since two thousand nine. So, yep, I'm well aware.
Yeah, I'm not teaching you anything. We've got the, the audience listening and-
Yeah.
Finally get some paperwork off your desk, maybe.
But, but the, I, I appreciate the, the questions of council. I really do. Because this is gonna, a big undertaking, uh, because it's through a residential area. Um, and that's, I don't know if anybody's got any accurate traffic data, but just by observation, I think East D might be our busiest northwest or north-south street, even busier than West Sea. It's a busy street because it takes people from the highway all the way up to Thirtyeth and then up into the college and the hospital and all those neighborhoods up there. So. And it's due for a revamp.
Changing this water line, is that, is that putting in new fire hydrants and stuff, too?
Correct, yes. Yeah, it'll be, um, new fire hydrants, um, new service lines from the water main out to, you know, the meter, the curb stop, whatever's there. So, um, all, everything underneath the road will be new. So, you know, you won't have, say, an old service line breaking underneath the road that you're out there digging up. So.
And will every, everyone's residential shut-off be placed o, o, out of the street?
Yes.
In their, in their lawn or in their property?
Yes.
In their utility easement?
All the curb, all the curb stops will be in the sidewalks.
Sidewalks, okay.
So we don't have to hunt for them.
It's a lot easier to locate them when you're, you know, you need to do a shut-off or you need to do maintenance on that or something like that. It's easier to find them if they are on the sidewalk.
If they aren't on the sidewalk now, who's responsible for doing that from the house to the curb stop?
Well, you, we would just stub out into where the existing curb stop's at and then there would be a line with a couple are there. And then if the, the homeowner wanted to go all the way to their house, that would be their responsibility. They'd have to get a plumber involved to do that.
So you, you've obviously reviewed all this and, and double-checked, re, re, recalculated everything and recommend this low bidder?
Correct. I mean, uh, I mean, there's obviously no guarantee, but, I mean, I'm comfortable that Eric can complete this job on time and do a good job for you. So.
I presume the materials have a certain grade level they have to be?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a whole book of specs here that outline everything that has to be, um, the material they have to use, what it has to meet. Um, with this, especially it's SRF, so it all has to be made in America stuff. Um, their, the contractors are all aware of that. Um, there's also a public work standards book that is made part of the contract that they have to follow that as well. That's something the city of Torrington's adopted. So, um, yeah, there's no substandard materials allowed or anything like that.
He, he has to pay prevailing wages, too, right?
That's correct.
The federal-
Yep.
-requirement?
Mm-hmm.
You've done well. Gentlemen, do you have any further questions for Mr. Dye? All right. Thank you, Mr.-
Thank you.
Any que, Jeff, you've heard all this. Anything you want to add or clarify or anything?
I'd just like to ask Mr. Dye, in your career, have you ever gone after a contractor's performance bond?
Uh, no, I've had it threatened a couple of times, but I've never actually had to go against one. So.
Okay, thank you.
It kind of puts them out of business if they have to do that. I mean, it'd be awesome.
All right. Go ahead, Councilman.
One other question on the, on the project funding. I can't remember what the CCL money is.
Capital Construction Loan?
State.
That was the last piece that we got.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Harkins? Or Mr. Dye? All right. Item number six, I would entertain a motion to approve and award the bid as presented.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll dive off the deep end and with some trepidation, make a motion to award the bid to Eric Reichert, insulation and construction of Scotts Bluff for the East D Improvement Project.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Deal, item six, to award to Eric Reichert, insulation and construction of Scotts Bluff, uh, the East D Project as presented on the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor in item number six of awarding the bid, approving, uh, the bid, uh, to Eric Reichert, insulation and construction, uh, for the East D Project as set forth in item six, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that bid is awarded and approved. Thank you, gentlemen, Mr. Dye and Mr. Harkins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, we are on item number seven, approval of the bills from March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five to April one, twenty twenty-five. And you have what's attached to your agenda, plus the handout Mrs. Strecker gave us. Mrs. Strecker, call on you.
I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question since Mr. Estes is with us tonight. On the second set, uh, page one, the payment to advanced pools, um, in the total of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety, um, that prod, so I'm just asking you the state of the project, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Mayor, that, that payment there was for the gutter tile installation and the blue tile installation. So all that was done. Uh, the progress is going really well. They're doing some final prep work to get ready for the stucco. Uh, they found a few more cracks when they cleaned some stuff off over the winter that happened. So their structural fill that for us next week. I hope that they show up. His plan, what he tells me, is when they show up, they'll be here maybe a week and they'll be totally done. So they're gonna clean it all up, get it ready for plaster, and they're gonna plaster it in a day, day and a half, he said. So they'll bring a brick crew in here and they said they'll probably get it plastered most of one day. Then he wants to fill it directly after that.
Okay.
So we're crossing our fingers and I, I gotta tell you, I'm pretty happy with this contractor. I've not had one issue with him.
Well, I appreciate that and, and you've kept us informed and that's my understanding. They have done a bang-up job so far and they're nearing the end.
Yeah. And so far, their work's been excellent. So.
Well, if there are no more questions, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the bills as presented?
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Kelly in item number seven, to approve the bills as presented. Do I have a second? I would second. Second from Councilman Victor. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item seven, all those in favor of approval of the bills as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those bills in item seven are approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, we are in public comment section. Um. Usually the fire chief is here. I don't see him here tonight. I think it's been relatively quiet. Um, Mr. Estes, do you want to give us any report on the?
I, I can, I, I'm retired.
You don't get to retire.
I, I don't, I don't get to go, so.
But my understanding, it's been fairly quiet since the last council meeting, so.
Sounds correct, Mayor.
The only thing I know, Mr. Mayor, is that I was informed by one of my neighbors that while I was out of town last week, another neighbor had a kitchen fire. But.
Good thing we have a fire department. All right. And I think the chief would be aware if there were any major things and-
I don't know whether anything's significant.
Okay. All right. We are in public comment section. Are there, Mr. Troxel?
Just real quick, Mayor, Council? Once again, thank you for awarding that bid. Um, by awarding these infrastructure product, uh, projects, you're benefiting the city in many ways, uh, including our residents. Um, one way so much is our, every time we do an upgrade of our water system, that benefits our ISO rating.
Let's, tell us what ISO is. For what it-
Insur, Insurance Service Office. They rate the water, they rate the fire, they rate the building.
Yes. So that'll help our residents with their insurance policies, helps the city. Um, we got a pretty good rating last go-around. I think it's done every five or ten years. I can't remember.
My building's done every five years.
But, um, it's a long time waiting, as you heard. Uh, we've had this on the books and we got them stacking up right behind this project. So a little bit of inconvenience for our residents will greatly benefit in the long run.
That's what I was thinking. A little bit of short-term inconvenience for a big benefit long-term.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. All right. Any other participants or parties for public comment? Seeing none, um, we will finish that item on eight. And I would entertain a motion to leave regular session and go into executive session. Item nine.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to resolve into executive session for the purpose of potential litigation.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to leave regular session and enter into executive session to discuss potential litigation. Do I have a second?
Second.
I, Councilman Warren got that one. So second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of leaving regular session and entering into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, we will go into executive session. Thank you, folks.